I just wanted to let everybody know that we are streaming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Snow.
How you doing, Mr. Ray? Can you see me?
Yes, yes, I can.
All righty. Are you ready?
I'm, yeah, I'm ready.
All righty, I hope everyone's here. Pursuant to Section 841412 in the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, along with a copy of Executive Order 2024, are available as an attachment to the agenda for this meeting. The agenda and attachments may be found at district OPS.org. The purpose of this meeting is to gather input and feedback from the Board of Education regarding the district's preparation for responsible return to school. I apologize. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
All right, thank you. Sorry about that. Cassidy?
Here.
Gotti?
Present.
Holman?
Present.
Mrs. Crackey, I believe, is trying to get in. Mr. Pearlman?
I'm here.
Ryan?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Snipe? Snow?
Here.
A, present.
Was Miss Snipe here?
Miss Snipe wasn't. I have Miss Crackey on the phone, on my phone, so I'm going to assist her as you get started.
Okay. All right. I'll make sure. Moving on to Item C1A, preparing for a responsible return to school. I think I will pass this on to Dr. Logan to kick us off.
Good evening, President Snow, Vice President Holman, members of the Board, and those here in attendance, especially our guests. Thank you for being able to convene this evening so that we could engage our stakeholder group, the Board of Education, in a discussion and workshop around preparing for a responsible and safe return to school. As we plan for the possibility for in-person instruction in just a few weeks, we want to be able to be sure that we are providing the public with as much information and input as possible. This evening, you will first hear from two of our experts who have been advising us now for some time as we try to figure out with its very often-changing information our plan for a responsible and safe return to in-person instruction. After we have an opportunity to hear from our two medical experts, we will transition to hear the results of our surveys and focus groups. We had several surveys, and when that time comes, Dr. John Crowe will lead that discussion. And then, lastly, there will be an opportunity for Board members to provide input around several different topics. I would like to say that I'll be reading the questions that the Board members submitted for, that were for our medical guests. I'm ready to introduce them. If you could go to the next slide, please. Our two guests this evening are Dr. Adipour. Dr. Adipour is the Health Director for Douglas County Health Department and has been really instrumental in leading Douglas County and the state during the COVID-19 crisis. And also, more recent to us, Dr. Simonsen, who was the Chair of Pediatrics, Professor.
Adipour is now joining.
Chair of Pediatrics, Professor, Division of Pediatric Infectious Diseases, University of Nebraska Medical Center. So we are thrilled to have both of. And I will pose them, I will, I think they'll, some of them will be suited towards one or the other, but both of you feel free to jump in. And these ladies agreed to join us until six, for about 15 minutes each, so we want to make sure that we respect their time. So the first question, and thank you, Board members, for submitting your questions. We really appreciate that. If a student or staff member in a school tests positive for COVID, will the Health Department recommend closing for a period of time? If so, how long? And will a certain number of positive cases in a school lead to an order to close? Dr. Poor?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, very well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, this is a big question that is being discussed today. Actually, we discussed it the entire day. So we do not have a very clear answer, and I know that's what all of you are looking for. But really, the CDC recommendations are a little bit inconsistent at this time. So it kind of is hard for me to really give you a straight answer that would apply in every situation. I think we need to be flexible to try to see where is the community at at this time, and where do we, as a school district, what else is going on? Where do we need to be at that time? The other question I can answer, will a certain number of positive cases in the school lead to an order to close? We do not. That is very unlikely that we will have an order out there to close schools. So I'm interested, Dr. Simonsen, what your answer is to this question.
Thanks, Dr. Poor. You know, I think that it's true. We're still listening and learning from our peers. We're studying what's happening in Europe, where some nations have already reopened schools to learn how things are going there. And we're finding that although there are still instances where COVID-19 is present in the community, that schools don't tend to be a hotspot for spread. And so we'll continue listening and learning and refine these decisions as we get closer and better understand what the conditions are in our local community as we restart school.
So this actually also potentially goes to the other question that Dr. Logan has forwarded to us. And I, I think it's the same answer. We are trying to see what is new science telling us. We are talking about children, and there are a lot of things at this time where we think children probably have lesser symptoms. Some of them may be asymptomatic. They are also less likely affected by this virus, and this all kind of plays into how we need to look at this. However, we do know that children potentially could be transmitters to the adult population. And, as you know, of course, those are many in a school setting. And so I think we just need to, we need to wait a little bit until we have full answers to those questions. Now, the third question that Dr. Logan posed to us is will the County Health Department make public immediately or as soon thereafter the number of confirmed COVID cases among specific school buildings in Douglas County? And I can speak to that because we have experience from several of the outbreaks that are related to school. And there, I would say, it is always our practice to work with the school district and review what the message should be to the media. And potentially, my preference is always that the school actually goes forward, and that's the communication first. We know it needs to happen very quickly because social media and parents, everybody talks. So the sooner we can have a consistent message that goes out to the public, the better off we are all. But we work together. Our PIO works with the school's PIOs really well. And so I think we have a pretty good track record in that regard. The next question is, how many contact tracers are working full and part-time in Douglas County? And how many are needed? I can answer that. At this time, we have within the department approximately 20 contact tracers. Those are individuals that we have cross-trained. Some of them were environmental health inspectors. And of course, during the last few months, we didn't do restaurant inspections. And so they have learned to be contact tracers. We also have, we are using a company called PRC, Professional Research Company, out of Omaha. And they have been under contract with the governor to provide us a contact tracer. In addition to it, DHHS also has trained some of their staff members for contact tracer. So we are able to expand actually very quickly to approximately close to 300 contact tracers. Now, I lost.
I'm sorry, I lost you for a minute, but I am back. Thank you for answering the question about contact tracers. The next question, on April 6, the hospital occupancy rate was 44% in Douglas County. On June 22, it was 74%. On June 23, it was 79%. It has only been going up since March. If it gets above 90%, is there any safe way to have students return to school in the fall? Or are we risking having too many patients than we have space for in our hospitals?
So those numbers, we are looking very closely, actually every day. And I can tell you, we do see the available beds are decreasing. So as of this morning, we had 280 med search beds available in the Omaha area. However, that means that potentially individuals who have waited with elective surgery because that wasn't allowed are now getting those things done. And those are, of course, not elective, so to say, but you can postpone them a little bit. So they are necessary. But for me, what is more important is what is, what are the available ICU beds? And how many patients, COVID patients, do we have in our hospitals? And that is actually some good news I can share with you. As of today, we have 93 patients with COVID in the Omaha-area hospital. That number, at the end of May, used to be 161. So we used to have 161. We now have 93 of them. What is also a good story is how many of those patients are on ventilators? So we have at this time 24 COVID-19 patients on ventilators. We have 126 ventilators in use, which means, as you can tell, many of them, more than 100, are in use for non-COVID patients. And we have a total of 367 ventilators in the Omaha area. So more than 240 are available at this time. However, every day when we talk to hospitals, we are saying, what, where, how far do we want to let it go? And I tell you, the whole hospital CEOs are on a call together. And what they would do is, they already are talking and saying, if they'd ever, the need would arise, we would share patients amongst each other because we have a lot of hospital bed capacity in our area. So I do not foresee that that would be an actual issue for school beginning to start or potentially close down.
So, Dr. Poor, I'm going to throw a question in here because I know we're going to get this from our staff, is that we, in addition to our 54,000 kids, young people, we do have 9,000 adults who work for us. And what could you share about adults? I know you've shared about children, but we also have 9,000 adults that we care for, well, as our employees.
Okay, so at this time, we have 111 ICU beds that are available for adults. And we have 11 ICU beds available for children. The total, the med search beds, that means for adults and children. So both of those, that number, 280, available at this time includes adults and children. And the same thing is with COVID patients. We take into account both pediatric and adults. So that number includes both.
All righty, the next question, and this is for probably Dr. Simonsen. How many MISC cases have been diagnosed in Omaha? And what would you like to share about that for our Board of Education?
So MISC, if anyone is not yet familiar, is the acronym for Multi-System Inflammatory Syndrome in children that's been identified as being associated or closely aligned with cases of COVID-19. And we think that children who have the propensity to develop this rare inflammation were previously exposed and infected with the SARS-CoV-2 virus. And in many instances, they never had traditional symptoms of COVID-19, but later developed inflammation that was presented with fevers and abdominal pain, vomiting, diarrhea. And these children are very ill, and they become ill quickly. So we have identified cases of this in Nebraska statewide and for our region, our catchment area toward Children's Hospital, we're numbering close to a dozen patients altogether. Our numbers for metropolitan Omaha would be smaller, and Dr. Poor can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe for the metro, we're still under a handful at about two patients that were Douglas County patients. The good news about these children is that with careful multi-system care and intensive care unit level care in some instances, so far, all of our children that we've taken care of are recovering and doing well. So that is an important message, even though they do get very ill and require expertise at the hospital.
Thank you. The next question is about mask use. And the exact question is, isn't it time to stop suggesting mask use and ordering it for those who can do so safely? Children over four, those without breathing conditions, et cetera. The reason I ask is that the phrase I hear most often is that wearing a mask is suggested when social distancing cannot be maintained. But I can't control the social distancing of anyone who happens to come near me. An example is from this board member. People say that they can social distance at a grocery store, but we all know that's not true. We all turn the corner, go down an aisle, and there's someone who is mask-resistant that I can't avoid. So generally, if you could just talk about the masks.
So masks definitely are one of the non-pharmaceutical interventions that we are really stressing strongly. It's not the only one, but it's one of the more important ones. And there are study after study who show that actually mask-wearing helps, and the transmission is less. However, I also want to share with you that when we talk about exposure, we talk about exposure less than six feet. That's the social distancing. And it has to be an exposure longer or around 15 minutes or more. So that, what that means is somebody coming around the corner in the grocery store would not be an exposure. So it is requiring it a little bit longer. We would like to, and potentially are, really recommending that mask is a good option for schools and for adults, for everyone to wear. But social distancing, hand washing, stay home when you are sick, all of these things are important and need to be layered on top of each other.
Thank you, Dr. Poor, Dr. Simonsen.
Yeah, I would 100% agree with Dr. Poor here. And I think mask-wearing is also a visible reminder for us and for those around us that it does matter to us that we're trying to keep ourselves and our community healthy. And so we really consider it to be part of our obligation as physicians and healthcare workers in the community to really reinforce that behavior as being part of how we stay healthy.
Thank you. One, one last question, and then if there are any, we have almost, we probably will have about seven minutes left after this question. I'm curious to know about antibody testing and vaccines, as well as the views of our two experts on when those would be available and how they would be distributed differently between staff and students. I am aware that they may not be well-defined yet, but it would be good to at least publicly discuss. I would also like them to discuss social distancing and square foot capacity, as well as how to safely serve food. Yeah, I'm also interested to know about contact sports and the usage of weight rooms. This seems to be a very often asked question by my constituents.
Well, I would suggest, Dr. Simonsen, would you start to talk a little bit about antibody testing? Because that's a big medical question.
You bet. There's a, there's a lot of questions embedded here, so we'll try to get them all covered. So antibody testing, I'll speak to first. And the difference between the PCR testing that we're hearing about as kind of that first-line test and antibody testing is that the PCR, the nasopharyngeal swabs that you've seen on the news and heard a lot about, those actually look for the genetic material of the virus. And antibodies are our body's immune response to a trigger such as a virus. And so when we're looking at antibody tests, we're looking at our body's reaction to the virus. And when we're doing PCRs, we're finding evidence of the virus itself. So that's kind of the difference from a scientific basis. It is possible to get antibody testing here in Omaha today. It is available to us as physicians to order. I take care of kids at Children's Hospital and UNMC Nebraska Medicine, and it is available to us for patient care needs if we would like to order an antibody test. to us for patient care needs if we would like to order an antibody test. And in my instance, when we've ordered that right now has been for kids that we're concerned about MIS-C. And that's really to look to find out whether or not we think they were previously exposed to SARS-CoV-2. And we're not finding it in every instance, that's been the national trend, but that's kind of the rationale for using an antibody test. Many people have questions about whether antibodies will provide protection such that you would not be reinfected and would be immune to future illness with COVID nineteen. And I think today, we just don't have enough information to know whether or not that's the case. We haven't had enough people be exposed more than one time to this virus to really be certain whether or not those antibodies protect us in the long term. So I think there's still much to learn about what's happening with the virus and still science that we have yet to discover. So as far as vaccines go, the vaccine development process is typically a lengthy journey and a multi-year process. It does appear that there are some candidate vaccines that have been started into clinical trials. And so we're waiting to hear what evidence of safety and of tolerability they demonstrate, and then studies would be done to look at effectiveness. In general, those types of studies take months to even years to conduct. And though we're working at this, at an accelerated pace, it would be unlikely in my estimation that we would have a vaccine at any time in 2020. And I think in 2021 would certainly be the fastest we've seen a vaccine go from the bench to the bedside to the community in, in modern medicine history. I would love to see that happen. It would be a wonderful opportunity. But right now, I think it's too soon to say when a vaccine will be available.
So I can just add to, Dr. Simonson, if you let me, about the distribution of a vaccine. And that is what we are talking about and are starting to plan as we go right now at this time. Because potentially there would be a mass vaccination effort in our community to make sure that everyone that wants to get a vaccine can get a vaccine. So we are talking about the companies who could actually provide the vaccine to their employers, employees, they're talking about potentially having vans who go around the neighborhood so that individuals who cannot or do not have transportation, that they would get the vaccine too if they so desire. So there are lots of plans that we will work on over the la, over the next two, three months. Again, as Dr. Simon says, potentially no vaccine this year, but we can already plan for it and buy equipment and medical supplies so that we are ready. We hear a lot that the vaccine will probably be distributed through the Vaccine for Children's Program. So some healthcare provider are going to get the vaccine and their patients could receive it through their healthcare provider, but we need to have all options available so that we can distribute it throughout the county. And that is going on as we speak. Okay, let's see what other questions we have.
The last question was about contact sports and weight rooms.
Yeah, those are, those are, again, we need to see what are the exposures there in them. And what is important is the cleaning after everyone has used those facilities. We already have heard right now from one or two individuals who have gotten COVID positive and have used a weight room thereafter. So these are, these are highly risky type of behaviors. Whenever we can, these type of activities should be done outside because we know out, but we also know that it is not possible for every sport activity to occur outside. But yeah, we are looking out for, for those, again, social distancing in a weight room, having equipment farther apart will be one thing, have smaller groups, a small, a smaller number of individuals participate in a weight room is the other option that can be used. I just want to make a few comments on safe food serving, that's also a question here. The one thing that we are discouraging at this time already is of course sharing utensils and buffets. Buffets really have been discouraged in restaurants at this time. And so what, what would be a safer option would be packaged food, grab and go, those things, and potentially even in schools, food being served in the classroom so that you don't have the mingling around in the, in the lunchrooms. And it's all about, I mean, the highest risk is in an inside, inside where a lot of people can congregate together. So that's what we are trying to prevent.
Thank you. Dr. Simonson, would you like to weigh in on the weight rooms and the contact sports?
Yeah, I agree that this is a really challenging area. It's at this time just not possible to make those activities risk-free. They're really a risk benefit calculation. So Dr. Poor's offered some good strategies to mitigate that risk in the best ways we know how. And I think we do have to really be cognizant of the fact that there will be a little bit of risk that remains. Physical activity and health are also incredibly important, and we all know that exercise improves our mental well-being as well. So I think providing strategies to help make physical activity as safe and enjoyable as possible would be things that I would encourage while recognizing that some of these activities will be challenging to be risk-free.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Board members, there's time for one question because it's almost at six twenty-eight. Is there, does anybody have a question, if someone raised their hand?
Question.
Pardon, I, I was, yeah, pardon, who had a question?
I think Mr. Perlman had a question.
Okay, that'll be the final question of the night. Thank you.
First, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, first, on behalf of the board, thank you very much, both you doctors, for sharing some of your time. Very much appreciate it. This is a little bit of a related question. How soon should families and children start thinking about getting a flu shot this year? And how early is too early?
That's a great question. We know that the flu can have presenting symptoms that might look similar to COVID nineteen with fever and, and respiratory symptoms. And so I would encourage folks to get a flu vaccine as soon as they become available. It's typically in the fall, around September, and there's no need to wait. But to go ahead and schedule those appointments to get your flu shot or go to your pharmacy or other walk-in where you can get that as soon as it's available. It's really most important that you get it on time rather than wait and have the flu hit and then not be protected. Sometimes there's a little bit of concern about whether or not it will be effective all the way through the season. I think there's much more evidence that people get sick having not gotten to get their shot yet than there is evidence of the, of the contrary, that the vaccine waned and then they became sick later.
Thank you so much, Dr. Simonson. We really appreciate it for you coming in and as Mr. Perlman to echo his, thank you on behalf of school district, the school administration as well for being on the call this evening. We appreciate it. So thank you. Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very, very well. All righty, we're gonna, thank you so much. We're gonna move on to Dr. John Crowe.
Adi Poor.
Is now exiting.
To Dr. John Crowe, who's our Director of Enterprise Strategy and Innovation for the Omaha Public Schools. Dr. Crowe is going to review our surveys that we were done, and I will turn it over to him now. We would love, have loved to have Scott Schmidt-Bonnie with her, we're here with him. And he's enjoying some very well-deserved vacation, so thank you, Dr. Crowe.
Thank you, President Snell, Vice President Holman, board members, and Dr. Logan. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and share these results of the surveys that we've launched here recently. So the goals of the surveys were three-fold. It was determine the expectations of students, families, and staff to hopefully inform district reopening plans, identify the support needed for students, families, and staff, and then to identify the proportion of students and staff who are reluctant to return in August. So we'll go ahead and take a discussion about the, just the overall findings. So all groups expressed appreciation for the opportunity to provide feedback. Anxiety is high across all groups. The results suggest that some proportion of this anxiety is due to the fact that families share concerns about what opening in August looks like. But we are confident that based on their responses, as we continue to share plans that we have for a safe, responsible opening in August, their comfort levels will increase. The vast majority of parents and guardians indicated they are not reluctant to send their students to school, roughly seventy-seven and a half percent. And eighty-eight percent of responding staff intend to report to school or work in August. Now, this does still leave a significant number of students and staff who have indicated they may not return to our schools immediately. However, when they were made aware of the elements of the Center for Disease Control under which the district will be reopening, staff indicated these elements increased their likelihood of returning to work in August. These elements were less impactful on the opinions of parents and guardians, who indicated that students in their household, that has an underlying medical condition that puts them at greater risk for those students. Now, the use of cloth masks or face coverings was a polarizing issue across all survey groups. However, a majority of respondents from all groups expressed support for the use of cloth masks or face coverings. This included students who expressed that the thought of wearing masks made them uncomfortable to varying degrees. However, staff and especially instructional staff expressed concern that this expectation for the use of face coverings would be difficult to implement and could cause significant disruption to the instructional environment. Some of the key takeaways from the student survey, there were two thousand five hundred and seventy-two responses with twenty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-two invitations sent, so that was roughly a nine point three, nine point four percent response rate. Students' level support for the use of cloth face coverings for everyone in the school setting is similar, but slightly higher than the perspectives of parents and guardians. Sixty percent for the students versus about fifty-three percent for the parents and guardians. This included the support from students who also expressed varying levels of discomfort at the thought of having to wear cloth face coverings. Specifically, twenty-nine percent of those expressing the need for everyone to wear cloth face coverings came from those who expressed some level of discomfort. However, seventy-one, roughly seventy-one percent of students either expect the use of cloth face coverings and other safety elements from the C guidelines, CDC guidelines to be enforced, or they are willing to return based on whatever safety processes the district implements. Basically, students are amenable to our return to school guidelines, whatever they may be. Student socio-emotional support is going to be critical upon students' return to schools. Our results find that significantly more students chose negatively balanced words than positively balanced words to describe their emotional state. And I have a dog, and I am so sorry about that. Of course, he's been sleeping all day, and now he decides to bark. About seventy-two percent of the word choices were negatively balanced, and twenty-eight percent were positively balanced. The top five words used by students to describe their emotional state were bored, was at about fifty-four percent, stressed or anxious, was fifty percent, worried, was forty-seven percent, annoyed, was forty-five percent, and frustrated was forty-five percent. Finally, students expressed varying levels of comfort with common school processes or activities. Depending in, describing in detail to students how they will be kept safe during these activities is going to be very critical. Knowing that aggregated data only tells part of the story, we have broken down some of the responses by various levels. Specifically, students feel, students' feelings by school level indicate that across all level, all levels, the negatively balanced words were chosen more often than positive ones. Students' feelings about returning to school by level indicated that a majority of students would only return to school if social distancing, hand washing, face coverings, and temperature checks are either enforced or encouraged. Most students at all levels feel comfortable both walking and riding the bus to school. Students at all levels become less comfortable once class transitions and extracurricular activities are factored into those equations. Moving on to the parent guardian survey, some of the key takeaways there, there were ten thousand nine hundred and sixty-two surveys completed out of twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-four invitations, so that's roughly a third, a thirty-nine and a half, forty percent response rate. And just kind of as an aside, this is a wonderful number of responses and just a testament to the engagement of our community and their willingness to kind of help our district move forward in opening both safely and responsibly. When asked where they fall on the continuum of humanistic to economic importance of reopening, humanistic was seen as more important than the economic considerations, thirty-seven point two percent and eight point five percent respectively. This perspective is also associated with the prevailing belief among the parents in Nebraska that the, the current directed health measures, which is the guidelines for reopening the economy and really the only benchmark that we have right now to take a look at, don't go far enough versus going too far to prevent the spread of COVID. And that's sixty-seven point three percent versus eleven point seven percent respectively. These perspectives are likely influenced by the findings that twenty-two point six percent of parents responding to our survey indicated that their child possesses a significant medical condition that puts their child at an at-risk population. And these parents are, they're less, they're less certain about if their child can be protected in an in-person learning environment. A majority of the parents supported all elements of the CDC's guidance on the safe, safe reopening of schools that relates to their comforts and sending their, their children to school on Sep, on Aug, on August eleventh. Of these guiding elements, the use of, again, the use of cloth face masks was the most contentious, with the majority, like I said, fifty-three percent of parents supporting the use of cloth, cloth face coverings as a protective measure. However, there were significantly fewer parents occupying the middle ground in this question, with only about fifteen percent of parents suggesting this element neither increased nor decreased their willingness to send their students to school. Further, it was thirty-two point three percent of parents suggested this element would erode their willingness to send their student to school. And as with the student survey, we took a look at some of this aggregated information. The influence that the CDC guidelines have on a parent's willingness to send their students back to school based on the student's medical condition indicated that for students who have a medical condition, the more stringent the parents believed the guideline should be, which makes sense. Medical condition broke down by grade level indicated that our programs had the highest medical condition response at forty-one point four percent compared to elementary school, middle school, and high school at seventeen point eight, twenty-five, and twenty-five point five percent respectively. The CDC's, the CDC guidelines' impact on students returning to school based on medical condition indicated that for all guidelines, as medical issues decreased, the likelihood of students returning to school increased. And the CDC guidelines' impact on students returning to school by school level indicated comfortability in returning to school, it, it varied greatly by level. And then switching to the staff survey, the final survey, there were four thousand five hundred and twenty-three responses from ninety-one hundred and thirty-three invitations, pardon me, which is about a forty-nine point five percent response rate. Again, this is just a fantastic response considering we are in the summer, and this was the highest response rate of all three surveys. And like with the other surveys, the engagement of our staff is exceptional, and I, in my opinion, underlines their willingness to get back to our students and open safely and responsibly. With that said, a significant number of staff did indicate an unlikeliness to report to work as requested in August at eleven point nine percent, twelve percent. This included both instructional and non-instructional staff. However, these results for instructional staff are significantly below national survey results that found twenty percent of instructional staff expressed reluctance to return to work as requested. Additionally, these rates for instructional staff are ten point six percent lower than the twenty-two point six percent of parents who expressed that they were reluctant to send their, their students to school in August. However, it, it's, it really is impossible to ascertain based on these parent results the number of students residing in the household for which this concern for the parents with concerns. And just over half, we're looking at a fifty-four percent of the concerns driving staff who indicated some level of reluctance in returning to work are due to their having some type of un. underlying medical condition that put them at greater risk. Other concerns were perceptions about the prevalence of COVID-19 in our community, that was 54%. Too many unknowns currently exist regarding COVID-19 and our reopening plans, that was 52%. Fear of contracting COVID-19, 51%. Too many students would likely be present at the school for reopening, 45.7%, and no vaccine currently being available was 43.1%. Instructional staff have concerns about both our ability to implement elements of the CDC's guidance for reopening schools and the disruption to the learning environment that these elements have caused. And again, just like in the other surveys, the use of cloth face coverings was among the elements of greatest concern. And again, as with the two previous surveys, we did disaggregate some information, and everything kind of held true, so staff at all levels indicated a large likelihood of returning to work in August. Staff at all levels indicated the likelihood of not returning was due to underlying health issues. And at all levels, the CDC's guidance for reopening schools that our district is using as a roadmap for planning efforts strengthened the likelihood of staff returning to school. That was all of the update that I have. I did just kind of want to mention that this survey did close yesterday afternoon, so no qualitative data has been analyzed yet. This was all quantitative information. And I did just, if you will grant me one small indulgence, I did really want to thank Scott Schmidt, Bonnie J. Stollman, and Molly Nicklin for their selfless dedication to helping us get this together from yesterday to today. And just in last week, since the surveys had been open, there were many late nights, early mornings, and working weekends, so they are superstars. So that was all I had. I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you might have regarding the surveys or the data as it was presented.
Any questions from any members of the board, colleagues? There's a lot of people on this meeting, so I wouldn't see if your hands raised, so just go ahead and speak. All right, well, no one else is, I have a question for you. Doctor, would you, and I hate using hypotheticals, would you say it would be best, the majority of the responses say that having a face mask at school makes them feel safer against COVID-19? Students and staff, face masks?
Sure, yes. I don't know that it makes them feel safer. We didn't ask that question specifically. We just kind of asked their feelings on if they had to wear face masks. And again, you know, in all groups, the majority did indicate that either they support it or they understand why they are going to need to be worn.
Can you go back to that slide, please? That was about the, that supported or understand why?
Yeah, give me a minute, please.
Good.
All right, in the meantime, Mrs. Godding has a question. Is it okay if we take her question now? Mr. Snow?
Go ahead, I didn't see her hand raise, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Godding?
She just raised it, go ahead.
Thank you. So, I don't know, first of all, I want to thank Research and I want to thank you, Dr. Crowe, this, I mean, you guys are better than any other research department out there, I believe. You do a great job, and so thank you for putting all this information together for us. I know it was done in a very short amount of time, and it's a lot of data, and so we just got it today, obviously, and I haven't been able to really digest all of it. But I do have a question, as I think about staff who may or may not be comfortable coming back because of their health conditions, and maybe this is a question for Dr. Logan, how will we engage substitute teachers and how will we manage handling situations where someone either can't come back, or maybe they come down with COVID as an instructor and they aren't able to be in the building for a period of time? So I'm curious to know how we're going to handle those situations.
Thank you for the question. Well, we have a couple of, first of all, we need to understand how many people that is, once we drill down to individual schools to understand, because, you know, in a survey, you know, people are answering, but not necessarily thinking about making the exact, the intentional choice to say to their school leader that they are not going to be able to come back. So there are some options that folks have. The CARES Act is, provides quite a bit of latitude for staff to take advantage of some of the provisions in that. We have already talked about how we have cadres of teachers who potentially could not come back, or other staff members, and how do we assign them to students who similarly may be in those categories? So that's part of the work that the HR team and others have started to actually figure out how to capture that information and then to deploy those individuals. In addition, our principal supervisors and our curriculum and instruction team have engaged, as well as our virtual school, which where we do see an uptick in folks who are interested in a homeschool option, because really the virtual school is a homeschool option. So those are all the things that we will take into consideration. The contraction of COVID, we've actually already had that, as you know, with staff members, we have had that since March, and those staff members have been able to take advantage of a leave code that we have around that. In terms of substitute teachers, that is going to be a struggle for everybody nationwide. Many substitute teachers are retired, that would, many are over age 60, which automatically puts them in a risk group according to the CDC. So that's going to be an area of concern for everyone in the nation. And when we look at the numbers of our staff who are over age 60, we are at about 1,700, a good chunk of that is our transportation staff, and as well as our substitute teachers who are our, who are our temporary employees. So those are all things that we're taking into consideration, trying to understand exactly which, who those people will be. We have also started to create a training module for substitute teachers, for substitute teachers who may have to substitute remotely, if we have the need, or teachers who are remote, but then they are ill, or if, for some reason, some number of schools are out for a few days or some number of days, and there's a teacher who's ill. So those are all things that we are working towards, and will be the things that we have to iron out between now and the first, and before we start school. We are well ahead of our peers nationwide, as you all know. We participate with the Council of Great City Schools, and just getting to this point is a pretty significant thing. And thank you for recognizing Research, because they're a major reason that we're able to have this workshop for you all today.
I guess I have one follow-up question, as I'm thinking about teachers potentially doing, or substitutes potentially doing the virtual piece. What about plans for students? Because what I heard was, and we don't know, obviously, how many parents will feel uncomfortable sending a child who could be compromised back to school. What are their virtual learning opportunities? Can they dial right into the classroom while the class is actually taking place and be a part of that class in a virtual setting? Just curious about that.
Well, we're looking at a bunch of different options. I don't anticipate that necessarily being an option, but we're looking at several different options for how that's going to. Again, I talked about the virtual school, which is really a complete homeschool model. One of the things that we want to do is maintain attachment. They're homeschool, and so once we see, like I said earlier, once we see who we have who's out, and what numbers of children we may have to make accommodations for, we'll be able to put that plan together. The team is putting together some contingencies, but they really will be based on scale of that number. So for an example, if you're a large elementary school, you likely, you may be able to solve some of these issues right in your elementary school, but similar to how we did summer school this year, summer school is not by school. There's a kindergarten summer school principal, there's a first grade summer school principal, and the children are grouped together by grade, and then they have a teacher that's assigned. And so it's a, you know, non-traditional model, because typically when we do summer school, it's children from one school who are together with, you know, children, other children from that school. So looking at it, we have to look at it more district-wide than school, school-centric, although there may be some ways, especially maybe in high schools where we have larger, obviously very large populations, where the problems can be solved in there. So that is a work in progress with several different divisions working on that.
Thank you.
Dr. Crowe, Mr. Snow had a question.
I believe Mrs. Crackey had some questions on there.
Okay, Mrs. Crackey, go ahead with your question.
Hi. Mine are safety and security kind of questions, and how we will be doing all of that sort of thing. I thought that it was great, that I thought the majority of the children were indicating that they were happy to go back to school. I think that they probably really do feel that way and can't wait to go. I want to know about hand sanitizers. It seems to me that in each classroom, there should be kind of a quart size or something as they come into each classroom. And will the teachers spray the desk, as I've seen them do in the beauty shop, they go with their spray and they spray all the stations, and they don't wipe them, they just kind of spray them. So that was another thought I had. And then I want to know about doorknobs on those classes that have those. What are we going to do with that? We don't want them touching this and that and the other thing, so that's what we want to be careful about. Can we answer that question about the doorknobs? Do we have an answer for that?
We can answer your questions about hand sanitizer. Dr. Sterba?
Good evening, Mrs. Crackey, and President Snow, and board. We do have a cooperative program going with UNL where we will have a gallon of hand sanitizer in every classroom, and we are also looking at other options.
I was thinking, exactly what I was thinking of. What about the doorknob? Have we had any thought on that?
Yes, ma'am. We are also looking at opportunities for teachers to hold the doors as kids come in, giving, we will have gloves and cleansers and disinfectants in classrooms, giving the teachers the option to use them. If they're not comfortable using them, then we will work with our operations staff to take care of that. We're also looking at operations being more vigil in those high-touch areas, and making sure that they are hitting the restrooms more frequently as well as those high-touch areas.
One of the things that I know we'll probably have, we'll have a problem with, the transition of classes and times and hours and schedules, and who's going to move in that hallway and that hallway, and going on one side of the hallway. We're going to have to re-plan that out, because I know, like, at Burke, it's crowded, and they'll have to go differently, because we don't want them in masks, with, to have their masks on or not. And then when we thought about masks, we've been the first people in the nation to figure out, how can we have that mask stick to them on their shirt or something, because it's going to fall on the floor, it's going to be dirty and all that, and they're not even going to know where it is? And what will we do about that? I have a lot of those kind of questions. Anybody know what we're going to do about them holding on to their mask without losing it, or is it going to be masks all over the place to pick up?
Do you want me to continue, Dr. Logan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we have purchased, you, thank you to the board for approving the purchase of cloth masks for every child. We have ordered five for each child. They will come in bags. We are looking at getting those to children during their open houses so that they become accustomed to wearing them. We will also have disposable masks on the buses, as well as at schools if children do not have theirs. We have also, Printing Publication is working on a catalog of signs to, for principals to designate hallways as one-way hallways, upstairs only, downstairs only, designating one door as an entrance and another as an exit only, so that we can get those traffic patterns in a way that students can distance themselves.
And another thing I thought about as I was reading the information, ventilation in the classrooms. In the past, not all classrooms were ventilated well. What are we going to do to ensure that?
HVAC systems are, our automation gentleman is Mr. Zimmerman, and he has been working to make sure that air is recycled through a classroom at 200%, so during the day, the air circles through 200%. A lot of the bond issue has addressed that, the HVAC systems and appropriate ventilation.
That's good. These are just questions I'm thinking of. And then I know what it is to hold your elbow and sneeze into that, but they kept talking about sneeze guard in the office area. What's a sneeze guard?
So our craftsmen have been also diligently working all summer at providing sneeze guards. So the plastic or plexiglass that you see when you go to the grocery store, or to the bank, or when you're out in public, we have provided sneeze guards for our nurses, our secretaries, and other office staff.
Are you thinking of those that are white or a color, or are more plastic, or more like that? I mean, I know what the masks look like, there's lots of them, and they show us different forms all the time on TV, so I'm still, I know what the ones are that could be in a package, but what are these, I still don't know what a sneeze guard looks like.
Mrs. Crackey, the sneeze guard, when you're going, when you go to the drugstore now, there is a piece of clear plexiglass in between you and the person who is working?
Oh, I did it. I absolutely know what you're talking about now, thank you.
Sure.
And, um...
I'm sorry.
I'm looking forward to it, but I'm still, like the parents, you know, we are all going to be a little bit worried about how it's going, and how do we know? We've got a little bit of time left, but we can't count on it having everything in place and everything the way we want it. I like the idea of everybody just getting a bag lunch or something like that, because we don't want anybody touching anything, you know? So if they just get that bag and then the food has been prepared and put in it, they won't actually pick up stuff in the cafeteria then, is that right?
They will have a grab-and-go breakfast. We still do want children to have a choice for lunch, so they will go through the lunch, and we will have hand sanitizer, of course, at the lunchroom as well, and we will rely on staff to keep students apart, but we do want them to have some choice. We're working with the USDA at different options and different waivers that we can use.
Thank you, Dr. Sterba. Mrs. Crackey, did that answer some of your questions that you had there?
Yep.
I also wanted to say, we, on Monday, we have, when we have our special meeting, we're going to be going over, and one of the reasons that we wanted to have this workshop is to make sure that we raise, anything that is raised here that has not been considered by school administration can be addressed when we roll out plans on Monday. So we will be doing that in detail on Monday. This is an opportunity for any of your input. So some questions we may wait for until Monday, but we'll try to move on. The next hand raised was Mrs. Godding, and then Mr. Smith.
I just had a quick question for Dr. Crowe. Can you tell me in the breakdown of the surveys, what West Omaha represents? I'm just trying to understand the difference between West, and then there's the other area, Northwest Omaha.
Yeah, so we just had them, we weren't doing it by, like, high school area, we were just having them indicate which area of Omaha they believed themselves to live in. So for the... Um, so for the, let me make sure I'm stating this correctly, for the student survey, um, about 29% of those students indicated that they lived in West Omaha. Um, for the parents, it was... Sorry, one moment, it was a...
No, that, that's okay. And I was just curious to know what, how it was defined. So if it was, if it was defined by the person who was defining it, some people may have said Northwest, some people may have said West. I was just trying to understand from my perspective if it was sub-district specific, so I could understand it, you know, what level of participation I had, but it's really not, it's probably...
Mainly because of, uh, school choice. Um, so we didn't ask them what school they went to mainly because we also wanted to keep this, um, as anonymous and confidential as we could, um, and, or where they lived. So it was, it was simply a, hey, where, where do you live in Omaha?
Yep. No, I understand. So it's really subjective to what, I just wanted to understand that part of it. So no problem. Thank you for answering that.
Sure.
Mr. Smith?
Yep. I just wanted to know, um, what are the guidelines? Are there going to be some special guidelines for our students who have special needs?
Yes, there will be guidelines for students who have special needs, uh, as there were prior. Um, can you, uh, be more specific? And that way we'll make sure that we capture that on Monday. I believe we will, but, uh, is there something more specific that you're talking about? Because we have made certain, um, uh, special considerations for our students who are in our ACP classrooms and, uh, students, uh, who are in some of our specialized programs such as our transition program and, uh, JP Lord.
Yep, so that's it.
Okay, yeah, we've been, as a matter of fact, our medical team that you, uh, met earlier, especially Dr. Simonson, has, uh, been, uh, a great advisor to, uh, Kara Salderna and her team, uh, in reference to special considerations and special, uh, PPE that we may need for, for students. For example, we know that some students would, should not wear, uh, a mask, but they can wear shields. So we have, uh, been doing that. Carol Wang from the Medical Society as well, I want to thank her for, uh, uh, making sure that we have, uh, ample shields to start the school year and our team is, uh, procuring more. Um, and, um, so those are some of the, some of the specialized things that we need, you know, for deaf and hard of hearing, um, as well. So, uh, those are many of the things that we have, uh, taken into consideration on Mr. Smith as we plan for, uh, a safe and responsible return.
Thank you.
Okay, should we move on to the next slide?
Mrs. Ca, Ms. Cassidy, does she have a, you have a question? I just want to make sure.
Yeah, actually I did have a couple, uh, I don't know if this is the appropriate time. Um, some of my questions might be for Monday, but I did have one for Dr. Crowe. Are we kind of finishing with the section on the surveys?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I do have just a couple for Dr. Crowe. Um, first of all, I want to thank, as everyone has tonight, research does just a phenomenal job and this is completely evident. Tackling three surveys at once and doing it quickly is just, it's, I, it's fantastic. I can't say anything more about our research department that hasn't already been said. So thank you. Um, first thing I want to ask, um, with rever, uh, relevance to the surveys, you mentioned, I believe, when you talked about the student survey portion, that students were apprehensive, particularly about returning due to like after-school activities and sports. Were there many questions on any of the surveys? I don't really recall many on the parent one that I filled out, but were there many questions geared towards sports and returning to sports on the surveys? I know that seems to be a very hot topic with a lot of constituents, weight rooms, sports, et cetera. So I'm just curious what type of questions there were, if many, regarding that area.
Absolutely. Um, so I'm for sure on the student survey, uh, we were asking about activities, um, and it was, uh, things like walking to and from school, uh, riding a school bus was one of them, uh, and then there's transitioning between classes, recess in gym was one specific question, uh, participating in extracurricular activities, uh, participating in athletics. So we did, uh, parse those out. Um, attending extracurricular activities as a spectator, um, attending athletic events as a spectator, um, eating lunch, uh, attending class. So it was these various activities, uh, that we were specifically asking the students about because they are going to be the ones, uh, doing this, involved in these things. Uh, I don't, let me take a look here really quickly. I don't know that we asked that exact set of questions to the parents.
Yeah, I, I did complete the parent survey. I don't recall much about that area, but I know that I personally have been getting a lot of input and questions on school activities, whether kids are even going to be able to have, uh, you know, clubs after school. There's been some talk of schools, like clearing out quicker than normal and there might be, um, a limited amount of clubs that can meet after school. I mean, I know the rumors, there's people, there's social media, there's a lot going on out there that people are just really concerned about. And after-school activities and of course, sports is very high on the list, as everyone knows.
I agree.
Kind of curious about that. Survey wise.
Yeah, again, uh, I, we felt that because it was the students who were going to be participating in those, uh, that it was important to kind of get their feedback. Uh, again, because, uh, hopefully, uh, obviously the goal of this was to get our, our shareholders' input and then make sure their voice is heard in the way that we do craft a return to school.
Okay. And I, and I realize some of this will be discussed further and we will probably go into more detail, um, as we continue to plan it on Monday. So just kind of wanted to get a feel for what was on that survey with, with regard to sports and after-school. So thank you.
Yeah, for sure. And, and I mean, this goes out to all of the board members and I will, uh, I will speak for Scott Schmitbony also because he's not here and that's what he gets for not being here. Uh, if at any point you, you have any questions about the survey or anything, you do not hesitate to reach out to us. Uh, we'll be happy to go over, uh, anything that was on there.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Crowe. I would also like to say that in addition to these, uh, to the surveys that they sent out, they also help focus groups. Uh, there was a four focus groups, four or?
It was three focus groups. We helped one with, um, parents, staff, and then, uh, community, uh, community partners.
Yeah.
And those, those focus groups kind of helped to, uh, uh, form these questions that we asked. Um, so we weren't, we, we were kind of giving their input on, on what was important to them. So then we crafted the questions around that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. We move to the next slide, next slide, and, uh, I think that we have any other board of education input on health and safety? Next slide, please. Uh, so any board of education input on, uh, well-being of students and staff and, uh, in the Omaha Public Schools? Anything that you would like to add or? Ms. Gunning, your help, your hand is up.
You know, the one thing that I noticed when I was looking here, um, at the feelings by school level.
Yeah.
There was a concern for me specifically, um, having finished up at the high school level now, but that students use the words loved, safe, and secure the least amount. And in the 30%, um, you know, secure was about 41%, but otherwise 31, 39%. That's, that's concerning, I think. And so I just, um, I'm not sure exactly what you do with that, um, but I just want to point out that, um, I think we need to be sensitive to some of those issues that kids are right now feeling and, and a lot of times their teachers and their staff are the ones that give them that support, um, and they've been without that for a while. So maybe that's part of it.
Thank you. Uh, it equally, equally, uh, struck me as well, uh, especially the, uh, one around loved. And so we have, uh, Lisa, uh, Utterback, I believe that Katie Heck-Weber is on, uh, the, um, call as well and, uh, putting together a, uh, a systemic, uh, social and emotional, socially-emotional, um, strategy, uh, to make sure that we're screening, uh, folks. We also know that the numbers of the reports of, uh, children who might be in danger have diminished significantly, um, as teachers being one of the major, teachers in school staff being one of the major reporters. And so, uh, uh, working with some of our partners to, uh, put together, uh, some screening and to make sure that we're addressing that. As a matter of fact, we have that as our, one of our, of our, beside, under health and safety, the next thing is the ethic of care, uh, before we even get to academics to make sure are, uh, are the kids all right? So we'll move on to the next one if we don't have any other, uh, instruction and maximizing learning time for students. This, um, is, uh, important, especially in terms of the, uh, concerns that were raised in the survey about social distancing. So I'm going to ask, uh, Dr. Crowe once more, sorry to turn your, uh, turn your camera on. Could you, um, uh, extract a little bit more about the social distancing? Because that seemed to come up in all three groups, a concern about the ability, uh, to social distance and would love to hear from the Board of Education, uh, what your ideas would, uh, be around, uh, the ability to social distance, uh, knowing we do have some schools with some pretty significant utilization over 100%. Would love to hear your ideas, um, uh, at this time. So, Dr. Crowe, can you?
Yeah, I, so, yeah, I'll go ahead and start and just kind of talk about, uh, kind of what we were seeing as far as the overview goes. Um, so the social distancing, uh, and the way that we kind of, uh, are going to enact what school is going to look like, I think seems to be driving a lot of the anxiety and the concern and the uncertainty. Um, uh, typically people are not fantastic with ambiguity as a whole. Um, so it's really difficult to plan for something that you don't know. And, uh, with the, the lack of information, there is a vacuum and that vacuum is oftentimes filled with, uh, conjecture, speculation, uh, misinformation, um, uh, agendas. Uh, so, uh, part of the issue I think is, is having a goal and a plan, if what, what people are looking for is a goal and a plan for what next year, even as a skeleton, is going to look like. So that way the planning can begin. So that way there's kind of a roadmap for people to take. Um, but without knowing what school is going to look like in any form, any fashion, uh, it's, it's, it's kind of driving some of these, these negative feelings. Um, so I think, uh, I'll stop there because I don't, I don't want, uh, I don't want too much conjecture, uh, from, from the data that we were seeing, uh, and, and kind of hear what some of the board members think.
Uh, I'm, I'm assuming most of this is for everybody processing this, uh, as this is, um, a lot of information to take in and, and to kind of go back out to our constituents, uh, share the PowerPoint and the information that was shared with us today, uh, and, um, bring that feedback to the superintendent, uh, as well as the administration and, and, prepare for Monday's meeting.
Uh, Mr. Snow?
Yes, Ms.
I, I do have a question on that if, or just a comment related to what was just asked. Um, I would be curious to know how the district, you know, so I guess what I want to hear on Monday is how the district plans to go about, um, trying to safely social distance, especially thinking about like elementary students. Is there a way to, um, have smaller groups and have other groups in other parts of the building? And so I guess I'm just, I'm looking for how that will look, um, when we get to Monday. I know parents are concerned right now about if they're going back to work on September 1st, what does that do for their kids, especially at the elementary level? So I think those are some of the questions that I'm hearing and I'll just be interested to, to hear how, um, we are planning that out, um, on Monday. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So we're looking forward to our special meeting on Monday and if there are any questions between, uh, now and then, please feel free to, uh, reach out. Again, thank you to all of our guests, uh, this evening, uh, Dr. Poor, Dr. Simonson, Dr. Crowe, and, uh, for your, uh, participation, we really appreciate it. And, uh, for the board, for their participation, uh, this evening in this, uh, board workshop. I have one last item. Am I able to share the screen? Am I able to share?
You may share a way.
Share the screen. Can you see that?
Um, actually you can't share the screen anymore for some reason.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday to, uh, to Mr. Ray. Did I stop sharing? I just want to make sure I stopped sharing.
Oh, you got your message across. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, just wanted to make sure that we said, um, happy birthday to Mr. Ray who got to spend a lot of time getting ready for tonight on his birthday and the days leading up. Thank you, everyone, for your participation and have a lovely evening. Mr. Snow?
Matt, is this your birthday today?
Yes, Mrs. Crackey. Uh, the meeting's adjourned, uh, at 7:18. Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Have a good night.